All right, six o'clock, I'd like to call the meeting to order. If you could please rise, please, Pledge of Allegiance. Hi, Pledge of Allegiance, to the flag of the United States of America. And to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, liberty and justice for all.
Rob, are we live? Okay, welcome tonight. Got some presentations, and our first presentation tonight is from SEI DJA. You guys ready to go? All right.
Hello, everybody.
Hello.
How are ya?
So, I know a few of you have been walking before, but I'm just gonna run through this presentation to give you a better understanding of where we are with the project, what's been done, budget-wise, where we're at, et cetera. And then I'll open up just some questions, so. This is pretty much a typical project budget slide that you always see, but with a new picture of that front entrance. It's pretty destroyed right now, but doing some concrete work and start some steelwork there next week. This, you know, again, just shows you where the contracts came in, what we had contingency-wise, et cetera. But this is the typical budget. Jumping to this one, this is some information continuing. We don't have any, had no incidents on this project. We've had no issues quality, quality. And then dropping the cost, you can see as of the month of March, there was just over nine million billed for the whole project for all the contractors. And then there's a new revised, as of the end of March, contract amount just under 13 million, with some of the changes we've been implementing. On the bottom, you can see the change orders. That's as of yesterday, when I redid our, my issue log. It has all the changes for the construction. And so now, it's been a little funky because this number down here has been shown as a negative because of all the backwardsness we went at the beginning with all the VE items, getting some money back in our contingency. We've now surpassed, and we're dipping into that contingency now that we started with. There was 279,000, and that is because we just brought the changes for that alternate tent bathroom that we're starting across from the main office. So, we're right where we want to be. We have still $214,000 worth of contingency left. And as of now, we've started the windows, and we've had no issues with them. So, it's a good thing that we can keep on contingency and get you guys more work, more things done in the school as we get down to the end of the project.
There is a significant demo to, you know, we've done a lot of the significant demo. The next major demolition item that we're gonna deal with would be the opening up of the roof level and the changing onto the steel there. So, a lot of the concerns, we're past. We're in a good spot.
So, this slide is just for an update. Obviously, we're out of the elementary school, not quite out yet, but we're out right now. With a few remaining major items over there, we still have to replace the window in the nurse's office. You do have to do all of the terrazzo work in that building. And the exterior work at both the entrances, stuffs get done. This will all get done over the summer time. Jumping down to the U-Host High School, Area B. So, those rooms, 118 and 120, we wrapped up a little while ago, except for some minor work mechanically to get all the units working and jiving. Room 120 is actually fed from the main office, so we still have to make sure that's all running correctly. The main office, those of you who saw it, we're in finished mode right now. There's some minor duct work we have to do. Ceiling goes in, we've started painting. Flooring will be going in shortly as well. Area C is this main entrance. Trenches have been excavated, concrete forms, concrete poured, gears footing, footers, I'm sorry. And then, like Rich mentioned, steel next week in that area. So, we're moving swiftly along. And then, windows is one of the bigger things that I'm sure everyone has been waiting to see. We started that in 118 and 120, and we're moving our way down towards the main entrance, around the district office, which some of those have boards on right now, around the library. And then we'll be kind of jumping into a few locations around the building where it's not impacting any learning for the time being until the kids are out of school. Then we can really start going at all the rest of the windows.
That window change, once it's done, is gonna be environmentally transformative to every classroom. So, each classroom is gonna be benefited by that. Currently, most of your window systems are, you know, well, their life usefulness. They're single pane in some of them, they're non-thermal broken. This system is gonna bring in a much better environment.
And they look better.
I just have a few slides of pictures for those who didn't get to walk the tour. This first one are the carriers that the plumber's installing for, now installed, for that alternate tent in those toilet rooms. To the right's just a kind of a shot of software rebuilding part of the wall that will be the main office with our temporary wall right behind it. And here, this is right where the bottom left, where the, your secretary will sit in the main office. You can kind of see down the hall for some finished walls that are painted. And then this is just another doorway right out to the hallway, which will really be the main access from the hallway into the main office. And I do have two more. They're a little dated back to Friday, but you can kind of get a good view of the darkness and the color change in the windows that have been going in. And these, where the purple insulation is now have been replaced with actual glass, but it's just kind of, was them working on Friday, couple pictures of that.
Is that install going well with the windows, like the frames and all that?
It's going great. It's, they are picking up their crews tomorrow, so we're just gonna keep going as swiftly as possible. They have a great couple steps with the way they're doing it, a good plan. Pulling them out, boarding them up, pulling the board down, because I think the demo guys are taking them out, or the glass guys are putting them in. So, it's a great system going right now. And then when we jump into other parts of the building, there's a little more abatement that has to get done on some of the sets of windows, but it's, we've had no issues so far. And then this is just another picture of the front of the building, the plastic coming down, and then where some of the concrete forms have been plugged. Just in the front there, the front of the building's completely destroyed, so sign of progress. So, if anyone has any additional questions, I can try to answer them the best I can from anybody.
That entranceway, I know we had a target date, we had to be done so we could do the floors sometime. Are we still looking good for schedule on that?
Absolutely, absolutely. The GCDC, you know, they are not stressed enough that they want to have that time and some room for that terrazzo, because that's a big area that we got to do with terrazzo. We won't have much time, it's possible to do that. But we're right on track.
Rich, this is kind of off-topic of this, but when this originally went out to vote, there was a sound system for the auditorium. And when I look at the work orders that are coming in, I'm not seeing it present on that work order. And I'm not sure if that's something that went away that I can't remember.
I don't remember off the top of my head.
I know, I'm not looking for a response in the next three minutes, but like, I'm just curious about what happened to that sound system.
I have a conference call with Jordan and Kyle in the morning, and when we're done, I'll make sure that item comes back to John.
Okay, yeah, thanks, I appreciate it.
I'm, I mean, I'm pretty sure that stayed in. I do not think we got rid of that, but I'd rather check.
Because I was, when you see, when you look at the work orders that are lined up for the auditorium, you can see all the work that has been completed, from the stage to the rigging, to the lighting, to the catwalk and all that stuff. It's just, that line is not there any longer. Or I don't know if it was even there to begin with. It's not something that I've really, it's a long sheet of items there. I don't always look at every single one of them, to be honest.
If I find out in the next minute, I'll let you know, but.
Hey, clock is ticking, right?
It's your first thing in the morning.
Thanks.
You don't recall offhand.
I cannot, I have no idea what to do.
Selfishly, I spend more time looking at the doors, the windows, the walls, so.
Yeah, you need those to deal with all the sound system. Anything else, guys?
For the tennis courts, John, did we install the wind screens? Is that?
No, not yet, not yet. We're waiting until the last minute before their first home match. We're afraid to put those, I mean, it's windy today, we're just afraid to put those up. So, we'll make sure that, you know, when Mr. Carpino gets out there with his crew, that those courts are ready to go and they look, you know, tip-top shape.
Anything else?
Thanks so much, thanks for being available.
You're welcome. Thanks, guys.
All right.
Thank you.
Thanks. Next, Mr. Massey. Yeah, thank you. Yes.
Good evening, everybody.
Good morning.
Thanks for having me come in. We are, for those of you who don't know me, Mark Massey, Senior Vice President of Operations with the GCDC. Here to give an update on the stamp overall, stamp site, stamp project. We're heading into a very, very active spring and summer. I don't know if you've been out there yet, but Plug Power has started their construction of their facility last fall, doing a lot of the earthwork. We, hopefully, in the next 30 to 60 days, will start roughly $100 million worth of infrastructure construction. So, there'll be onsite water main extended, there'll be a sanitary tank installed, as well as rebuilding a portion of Crosby Road from Stamp Drive south to the plug site. We'll be working on installing our force main, which will do a direct discharge into Old Orchard Creek. The onsite power line that's there that currently bisects the site will be rerouted. And a 345 KV to 115 KV substation will be constructed up at the north end where the large 345 mega power lines are. Part of that reroute will carry a circuit from that substation around and then run down to the plug site. So, Plug was at the Alabama Planning Board Monday night, got their building permit approval with a few conditions. So, they'll be starting to do footers here soon and start moving forward with that. And so, we'll see a lot of activity out there construction-wise this summer, probably into next year as well on that. We also see a lot of projects. There's probably four or five right now that are very, very active. One is a semiconductor company, about 1,300 jobs. They would take roughly 200 acres. They have said that we are the top site that they are looking at, but right now, they are waiting on federal legislation. If you've been aware about what's been going on with the Federal CHIPS Act or some whatever other names they've been calling it. So, a lot of the large semiconductor companies, some of the renewable energy companies are waiting on that legislation to be, go through the negotiating phase and then go start issuing RFPs hopefully before the end of the year where companies can apply for funding. That will have a significant impact on when that company would make their decision. So, we also have a very large, about 3,500 jobs, which is a battery cell company. So, a lot of what we're seeing are all renewable energy-based. Obviously, New York State has some pretty aggressive goals as it relates to renewable energy. I think 70% by like 2030 or 2040. So, New York State's gotten a lot of attention from renewable energy companies, specifically solar cell manufacturers, solar panel manufacturers, and also battery storage. Obviously, Plug Power is a hydrogen fuel cell company. So, those types of companies are extremely interested. One of the main reasons is the hydro power that comes to the stamp, where they can take green power and turn it into green energy. That's a big, a big thing for them. So, a lot of companies are socially conscious of their carbon footprint and are trying to minimize that to the best extent possible. So, having hydro power is a huge resource for us to be able to do that. We do have also semiconductor R&amp;D center, that's about 700 jobs that's looking, as well as a solar panel manufacturer that's about 4,100 jobs. Obviously, now all of these can fit at the stamp site. More than likely, one of those large ones would take the main campus, the 400 acres on the north end. We also have another developer that's looking at doing possibly up to three buildings on the southern end of the site, which would be geared more towards light manufacturing. So, that one can be there along with the large one up at the north end of the site. So, most of our large infrastructure has been completely designed, engineered, and permitted, and we are just awaiting a company to be able to pull the trigger on the construction. In the most recent New York State budget, there's a shovel-ready development fund there that is geared towards, basically, there's three mega sites in New York State. Luther Forest, which is pretty well full. There's the Marcy Center, which just landed Crete Semiconductor Manufacturing. There's one being developed in Syracuse on our site. I think it landed at about $200 million in the shovel-ready fund to supply funding for infrastructure for mega sites, so sites like ours. So, there is funding there that's available to us once we secure it, to be able to construct that infrastructure. So, we're seeing a lot of activity. We're really excited, there'll be a lot of construction going on out there this year. We're looking forward to it. And I would, if anybody wants a tour, hopefully, if it's not snowing, love to meet some people out there, walk around the site and show you some maps. It's, it's one thing to see a 400-acre parcel on a map, it's another to actually look at a 400-acre parcel. I can tell you that every company that we've brought out, when they look at the map, yeah, yeah, yeah. When you take them out to the site and they see how big 400 acres really is, or 600 acres really is, that really has a change on them as well. So, be more than happy to meet anybody out there and give you guys a tour of the site and show you on a map what we got going on and where everything's gonna be. And depending upon where Plug Power is at, I'm sure I'll get you a tour of their facility as well.
What's the timeline for Plug Power to be running?
So, obviously, there's supply chain issues with a lot of things in the country right now. I think they will have their facility pretty well done by the end of the year. The big holdup may be the large transformers that we need for the substation that would power the facility. So, my best guess is probably very early next year, they'll be up and running and producing.
Is water availability from the county in issue or something?
Not for them, so we have enough for them. Anybody else that comes in, we can get 6 million gallons per day from Niagara County. That's been designed, engineered, and permitted. We would need funding from the state to do that, but most of these large companies are looking for 3, 4 million gallons per day. So, we can get 6 MGD from Niagara County. So, Genesee County has a franchise, or Monroe County Water Authority has a franchise agreement with Genesee County. As part of that agreement, Monroe County did carve out stamp. So, we are able to go to a non-Monroe County water source. In this particular case, it's Niagara County water. We do have water available from the water.
There was a semiconductor plant that just, I think, now is Ohio, if they were gonna build one?
Yep.
Were we in the running for that at all, that one plant, or?
We don't usually comment on whether things were active or not, but we have had two or three different semiconductors looking at our site. A lot of what we noticed with some of those was, they were looking to do Monster, like they're talking 20, 30 million gallons per day of water, 8, 10 fabs, kind of more than what we could provide at this site. But initially, but some of the smaller ones, we're talking with. But we have, we've had a lot of conversations over that.
Jobs, Mark, I can't remember what power, Plug Power was.
68.
68 jobs.
So, 30 jobs onsite and then 38 jobs, 30 jobs onsite and then 38 jobs would be truckers. Truck drivers. But they were looking, I think, $70,000 annually for their truck drivers is what they were putting in there, and I think all you needed was a CBL license. So, Plug Power also has a manufacturing facility that they've completed up in Rochester. So, that facility's making what's called the electrolyzers. So, the electrolyzer is what they utilize where they take the water and they split the hydrogen and oxygen atoms. So, and then they basically cryogenically freeze the hydrogen to make it into a liquid fuel cell. So, the Rochester facility will produce the electrolyzers that will be used in the facility here.
Okay.
And that's around.
So, just a back and forth then, basically?
Well, they'll produce some and then they'll come here and stay here. And then, if they need to replace them, they'll get more from that facility. And I think that was around 200 jobs. I think they just made another major announcement of a large facility in the Albany area somewhere too. So, they're rapidly growing.
Did they just put that plant there, or how long's that been there in Rochester?
They, they started the renovation of that building, I think it's in Eastman Business Park, maybe a year and a half ago.
Anything else, guys? Wow, this is encouraging.
Yeah, like I said.
It seems like we broke the seal here, privately.
Once that, that substation's a big, that's a big thing to get that done. And Plug Power is definitely prying the money on that, to construct that. So, that's, that's a huge win for us. And then, because that basically cuts, you know, 18 months out of a timeframe for our company, and that supplies huge power. It's a 500-megawatt station. Plug is gonna use just over 200 megawatts, so there's, there's plenty available.
Just more enticing, right?
Oh, absolutely, yeah, yeah. And then, once you see stuff on the site too, that helps with a lot of companies. Some of them, you gotta try and get them to picture it, but once you start seeing activity on the site and the power line gets moved and road re-done, then it's, it's a big deal to a lot of companies to see that kind of activity on site, so.
That's exciting.
It is, very much so. It's gonna be a busy summer, so.
What should we anticipate for pilot on some of those projects? Is it too early to start talking pilot?
Hard to tell.
We'll start spending the money.
Hard to tell, but all of those, all of those deals are gonna be competitive with other states and will have to be competitive with that as well. But it's, it's, it's hard to tell. It'll vary, some of them might only be a couple million square feet facility, some may be more than that. Some may have clean rooms, which could be assessed at, you know, 500 bucks a square foot, down to office space, which could be 40 bucks a square foot. So, it's really gonna come down to the breakout of the facility and what the different uses are, because each of the uses will have a different assessed value per square foot. It's hard to tell.
Looking forward to that part of it.
I think we all are, we all are. Yep. So, again, anybody, anytime, let me know, I'd be happy to meet you out there. I don't, I want to stay away from quorum issues. I don't want you guys holding a board meeting out there while we're walking around the field, but be happy to set up multiple tours for you guys and take you around, show you around out there.
Probably take you up on that.
Absolutely.
And Sonny and Edie, give me a call.
I love showing off dirt, I love doing it. It's better than looking at a map.
Field trip.
Yep. You gotta bring your own lunch and permission slips from your parents.
Thanks a lot.
Thank you very much. Thank you. Thanks, Mark.
Okay. Up next, Mr. Steller and Mrs. Miller. Are you ready to go, guys?
Yeah, I think so.
You guys can use the remote that's up there to go backwards, forwards.
Got it. So, good evening, we're not talking about Plug Power. I will tell you that when everybody came in this morning, they looked at those windows and it went down the hallway, like everybody was talking about the two new rooms that got windows today, which is basically around your area. Yeah, they were very, very excited. And then they were outside my window, and I'm not slated till August. And I thought, maybe if I like did something, they would put them in.
Bridge is break one.
I have like swords, because I, so I'm Carrie Miller, I teach at high school, and I have pretend swords for Romeo and Juliet, and the kids are always using them. I could just be, you know, accidentally break a window, excellent, yeah. I like it. All right, so today we're gonna talk to you about the OA mentoring program, which you approved as a board about two years ago. So, this is our second full year. Last year was kind of a slump because of COVID, but we did get a lot accomplished last year, and so we're gonna tell you what we've done over the last two years. You ready?
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay. So, in a nutshell, our, the importance of our program, we want new teachers and staff members to come in here and feel supported. And we, we start over the summer, and we meet with admin and we try to pair teachers, new teachers with other educators here, seasoned educators, and we try to make sure that they fit really well. So, this new person coming into this district has someone to rely on outside their own teams. And we really want to open up more lines of communication, and we'll talk about that as this goes on. But the big thing here is we want to ensure retention for the district. Carrie has taught here 19 years?
19 years.
Okay, so she's taught here 19 years. I graduated from here and very lucky to be back here as a teacher. And I take it personal when people leave our district, and I feel we have the best district. So, our job, we both seasoned that teacher here, and I'm from this area, we want people to stay here. So, that's been our big push when we're developing this program. And I think we're doing a pretty good job with this right now. But it's gone smooth, and when, I'm glad everyone okayed it to split up into two positions, Carrie being up in high school, myself being elementary. I remember Connie called and said, hey, we're thinking about splitting it. My first question, I can't lie to you, was, who am I gonna be working with? And when they said it was Carrie, Carrie and I are really good friends, and she helped me a lot when I was teaching sixth grade over here. So, we have a lot of the same values and beliefs and what we want to accomplish with this program. So, it's been really easy, it's been fun, stressful at times, but more fun. And yeah, I hope you guys enjoy what we've been creating with this.
Yeah, Connie did a great job partnering us, for sure, but we break different strengths, so it's been great. But definitely that the retention and with the great resignation that everyone has been talking about in the press, right? And unfulfilled teaching jobs, we don't wanna turn over what we already have. So, talking about that, we have 16 new teachers that we support, and we have 16 mentors that they get one-on-one with once a month or more than that, just to give you an idea. So, that's 32 members of your staff that are getting supported through this program. So, we're gonna, we're gonna play this for you. This is a little bit about teaching, so, you know, we're pro-teachers, obviously, we're hoping this works. But it's been a really, really hard couple of years for teachers. So, we're gonna give you a little idea of how hard it's been.
This year has been a marathon for teachers. They faced constant changes and big challenges at every single turn. It's been hard to teach into the abyss of black screens and muted microphones, or navigate the hybrid landscape with our attention split between students at home and students in person at the same time. Or the challenge of keeping students socially distanced with the constant reminders to keep their masks on. We miss the little things like fist bumps and high fives and smiles on the students' faces when they have that aha moment. Teaching has been a marathon, but at the end of a marathon, there are different levels of tired. Some people are simply exhausted. They have crossed the finish line, and they are placing their hands over their head with a mixture of gratitude that is over and a sense of pride over facing a huge challenge and succeeding. These teachers are worn out and they need rest. But other teachers are injured. These teachers have finished the marathon, but they're hurting right now. They have experienced genuine injustice, and it has shaken them to the core. Many have faced trauma. These teachers need more than just rest, they need healing. I made this continuum for myself as a way to think through whether I'm actually tired or injured. This isn't scientific or research-based. It's just a tool I made for myself a few years ago, and I thought I would share it. So, here's how it works. In some cases, you need rest. Rest is a chance to recharge. Here, you need a break, but you're also kind of ready to learn. So, you might take a vacation, go on a few hikes, spend some time with friends, read a book, spend a day baking, or just binge-watch your favorite TV shows. But you might also engage in professional learning and work on some planning for the next year. Next, there is recovery. Here, you might need a longer break with deeper processing. You might still have a vacation and spend time on your hobbies, and you're definitely gonna hang out with your loved ones. You might also engage in professional learning, but you need some time to reflect and journal or have coffee with a friend to process this past school year. You might need restoration. Here, you recognize that something was taken from you this year and you need to recover it. In this phase, you still need rest and you need to recharge with time off. But you might also need affirmation. You might reread old thank you notes from students or meet up with colleagues who remind you that you are a great teacher, even if this school year was a dumpster fire. This might even be a chance to celebrate the fact that you get to be in the same space as your students. It's a chance to look forward to the things you've missed, like that Socratic seminar that you do or those hands-on maker projects. Restoration is a chance to return to normal, but also a chance to redefine the new normal and to advocate for changes in the system based on all of those things you learned this year. But in some cases, you might need rehabilitation. In this place, things feel truly broken. You are hurting and you need healing. You might need to talk to a professional counselor and maybe even find a support group as you process the year and move toward health. It's important that we recognize where we are in this continuum and what we need. But it's also important that we recognize where our colleagues are as well. We all need the permission to be in our own place in the journey of rest and recovery for a really hard year.
So we are that support group for our teachers. And it has been a really rough year. People are all over the place. But that would be an example of a video that we would bring to our teachers. And we have a Google Classroom where we would post that. And it helps them to know that we are the people that they can come to and talk to about wherever they are on that pendulum, wherever they are on that scale. And we're the people that are gonna help them with recovery and affirmation and to help them to know what to do next.
This year has been a marathon for teachers.
Sorry. Got it.
All right, so for mentoring, we're gonna talk about our communication as well as mentor, mentees, how they communicate. First, they meet monthly. The state requires that they meet for 60 minutes. And we base it off their own schedule, whatever works for them. And they fill out a document that will get handed to us at the end of the year so we know that they met their requirement. And though we meet during planning time, they might meet after school, before school. And meeting with, I know the mentees down at the elementary school, they've done a really nice job communicating schedules, which has been great, I'm sure, same with the middle high school. Our Google Classroom is something different than we've done in years past, where we put up monthly topics, assignments, where we give them quite a bit of time just to talk with each other, respond back. And go see a few examples in a minute here. Handbook that we revamped. Everyone gets a copy of that. And they follow that. And we also have different topics in there that they can talk about. If there's something that maybe, you know, they've hit a lull, but you kind of tailor it to them. Everyone's different. Everyone has something new to talk about. And open door. They can go to either of us for anything. I've had mentees and mentors stop by my classroom for a little advice. I know Carrie's went through the same thing. But we wanna be there for them and direct them. And then we have Connie and admin that we can go to if we have questions, which has been awesome too. Now, this says first year, 19 years, 14 years. Yeah, we follow this too. We go through this. Anticipation, survival, disillusionment, rejuvenation, reflection, anticipation. We've really focused on these phases in our discussion posts where veteran teachers, support staff, and our mentees, where they fall in and how they can talk about that and how they can kind of change their perception. Talk about winter break here, disillusionment. And now we're back on our climb up to anticipation towards the end of the year and things to look forward to. And a big piece, reflection, reflecting on what's working, what's not working in our classrooms. So this has been a really big piece for our program.
So this is our Google Classroom. So we, when we first got together, we had these great ideas that we're gonna do breakfasts and after school, get together. You know, COVID didn't let any of that happen. And then we have a huge subs shortage. So there wasn't like real, you know, open time for us to get people together. And we wanted to have these discussions with our big groups, so we decided to create the Google Classroom. And this was something we would've done anyways, but it's really taken off. And we put talking points on the Google Classroom, hoping this opens for us. Ryan's really good at writing out talking points.
It's because your father didn't write them.
Hit the drop-down, cause maybe you can sign in as yourself. Use another account. Uh, you could do that.
Only if you have your phone with you.
Yeah, cause it'll be dangerous.
I got it. That's funny. Glad you're here. High security.
See what brought these teachers with the security, don't you?
So this is our OA mentor-mentee hub. And we present posts probably about once a month, sometimes twice a month. And we'll do topics. Ryan just posted one this morning, talking about that after Easter break, anticipation to the end of the school year. And then he does pointed thoughtful questions, reflectory.
Yeah, so just a couple of quick questions. And you can even see, here's our layout. So you're seeing each month, we have something due by the end of the month. Mentors, your only focus is this. Mentors-mentees. We like for them to meet and then answer together too when we have discussions. That way, we're getting both of their thoughts. And it's awesome, the one, we have like 23 to 24 responses. And it's teachers going back and forth about certain topics that mean a lot to them and giving advice, which is fantastic.
As you can see, when it comes down here, we have 23 class comments. That means there was back and forth on that topic between the mentees and the mentors and us. And the nice part about this is that it's 100% confidential. And, you know, people, I think I'm one of them. I was just reading through, cause I had the book. And it, and I said, you know, it's okay that you're doubtful right now. It's all right that you don't feel okay right now. You know, you're okay to slow down your curriculum. Just stay to standards and slow it down. If your kids are having a hard time, you're, you know, just that affirmation that they're okay. And that's what we're here for. And so just that kind of confidential place to kind of dump and talk, which I'm sure all of us could use at some point, not just as teachers, right? So this has been, this has been really, really great. Yeah, I'm gonna see if I can get that. Nope. Aha. All right, so this wraps up everything we've done for two years.
Yeah. We have our handbook, and I know I did a hyperlink to that. You guys approved this. We, we really took a lot of time to revamp this. We feel that it targets our teachers and our staff members a lot better than the previous years. So, like I said before, everyone has this copy. They can refer to it as much as they want. And we have different checklists and things that they need to turn in within this document. Trainings. So we actually just had a training last month?
We had a training two weeks ago. And then our mentors also had a training two weeks ago.
So we're getting training. Mentors are getting trained and the mentees, we're checking up on them as much as we can. Our materials, we have our mentor Madder books. Everyone's getting a copy of this. The handbook, and then our mentor hub, which we showed you. And the big thing, family. And I kind of moved to this to start off, retention. I want everyone to feel they're at home. So Carrie and I try to come up with creative ideas, whether it's like a small treat, a gift around Christmas time. Even just like a shout-out, like, you're doing great. You need to hear that sometimes, because you don't always feel that. So we've really tried to have everyone feel the same way, just feel positive about teaching. And this last two years have been difficult, but we're getting through it. And I know we're doing a good job. Yeah, and I'm hoping our program plays a big part in that.
We say teaching, cause we're teachers. But there are also, your new nurse also received mentoring at the elementary school by our nurse up here, which at the time needed to be done, especially in COVID year. Our school psychologist, long-term subs, they decided this year because we just had a lot going on to give them a little bit of extra support. So admin's really been looking out for the entire OA community to make sure that everybody's supported and really can help the kids in the community as best they can. That's it?
How long do they stay teamed up? Is it just the first year or do they?
So it's two years. It's two years for all teachers and then nurse, psychologist, speech pathologist, those are all one. And then if the superintendent decides that they want to, he wants to extend a mentor-mentee relationship, he may see that somebody he wants to keep as a teacher but needs that little bit of extra time with somebody's support system, he can go ahead and ask for that person to stay with him for another year.
Is this program available to long-term subs that are in the building? Either building?
Well, I, it, we'll talk to admin and kind of see, like, if we have someone for two or three weeks, basically their team would be their mentors. But if we have someone beyond half a year.
Like covering a leave?
Yeah, yeah, yeah. So Kristen Crawford has Kristen Leiker as her mentor.
Gotcha.
So she has someone for lineup, yeah.
However, Cindy Qualig, she doesn't-
She should be on the other side.
We wouldn't get approved for that one.
How does someone sign up to become a mentor?
It's a good question. So in about the next six weeks, they'll post the position as being open. And then there's a, a application that they have to go through. And it's basically just to make sure that they have the same skill set that we're looking for. And then there is, admin sits down, you need sits down, we sit down. We look through those applications. And then we ask from that list for approval from you. And then once we get approval, then we get new hires and then we pair them, so.
And we've had a pool of, cause we've had a lot of people apply for it. So it's been kind of nice that pick and choose. If someone does come in, comes along to himself, or, you know, a new teacher comes along, we have someone that we can pull out of that pool as well.
That's great.
Yes. We really got it down to a nice system so that it works. And then it doesn't, there's, you know, no favoritism. It's just, it has like a system to it. And if we stepped away, the machine would still work, which is really nice.
Well, I think that's what you have. You have developed an infrastructure that, you know, I'm not saying wasn't there, but maybe. It wasn't there when I first came on the board. I did not see this kind of process, this type of organization. When you look at that handbook, it really lays everything out for you. Like you said earlier, Ryan, this is mandated, but the OA way isn't. And you are the stewards of the OA way. And no state can, can enforce that. Only you can.
Right.
And when you're talking about 32 teachers that you're impacting, that's a substantial portion of our staff. And it's, it's very relevant, what you're doing. And how you support them is, is really invaluable. When you first walk into a district, it's like coming into it like a different world.
Right.
Just doing attendance or whatever. It's hard. And to have a mentor to be able to walk you through that and help you and, you know, and not be worried about asking a question that seems pretty trivial or stupid can be really relieving to have. And I, I think you guys are doing a great, great job. I, I, I love the, the training here that you guys are able to go through, through poses. I, I guess I didn't realize that that even existed. And that the mentees are able, like, the mentors and you are able to go and validate what you have in place and then improve on what you already have is pretty cool.
They've made it so that the mentors have been going virtually. And the last time they went, it was four o'clock to five, or 3:30 to about 4:30. So our mentors were able to sign up for a May date or an April date. And she just went over questioning, like, how do you question? Or how do you ask questions of your mentees? And they stayed on for like an hour. A lot of them drove home and went on and got on. And it just helps to keep us nice and fresh.
But this, this does not happen in all school districts. It ju, it just doesn't. This is, this is very nice to see here.
Thank you.
No, thanks.
Any other questions?
I think it's a great program, though. As far as this day and age and the retention of new staff and the support that you have to continue to wanna stay here. But, you know, also within each other too, with the veteran teachers, you know, supporting one another. I mean, like I've been saying, the, the last two years have been really not, you know, crazy. And so this is great.
I think it's important, I like that you said that, because I love the fact that we're giving our new teachers support, but I love the fact that we're empowering the teachers that are already here, that have put in all that time and have all that experience. They need to know that they're valued beyond the classroom sometimes. And this is just a little way for them to get that.
Keep this up, guys. This is, this is great.
Appreciate it.
Thanks.
Thanks, Carrie. Thanks, Ryan.
All right. Under the approval of minutes. Be it resolved at the minutes of the March 15, 2022 regular meeting, and March 24, 2022 special meeting be approved. Can I get a motion? Second?
Yes.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Visitor's request, none tonight. Okay, thanks, Ms. Cole. Under the approval of warrants. Be it resolved that after an audit of the bills, payment of the warrants and internal claims, audit report for 317, 2022 and 41, 2022 be approved. Can I get a motion? Second? Any discussion? All in favor? Opposed? Motion passes. Okay, treasures report. Under the second reading here, John.
Yeah, the second reading of that policy regarding us keeping kids here at least till they're age 17 of the school year before leaving us if they feel the need. The board didn't have any changes last month, so it's again up for approval or comments or edits.
I liked it last month. I don't know if anybody had any adjustments that we're thinking needed to be made.
Make a motion to approve the policy as written?
I would second that.
All in favor? Opposed? Motion passes. Thanks, Matt.
So I just wanna let the board know that the high school administration and myself will get this policy out to our school families, just so they are aware of the change. I am sure that there'll be, you know, positive feedback. And along with that comes some negative feedback, but we'll make sure that our community knows. Thanks.
Got it. All right, Christine. I think you're up, lady.
Okay. This is the night that we present to you the property tax report card and the title appropriation budget that's gonna be presented to our voters in May. We've had this culmination of a lot of meetings coming up to date. I think we had a really good meeting, the budget workshop in April. And to finalize this. So tonight, we're just gonna look at a budget glance, looking at the proposed expenditures by line and the same for revenues. And take a look at our tax levy, a brief overview of our district reserves, take a look at the property tax report card and talk about the budget here and the budget updates. So this year's 2223 proposed budget is for $23,589,606, which is a $2.2 million increase or a 10.46% increase over the prior year. That increase in, in amount is significantly larger than the normal year, because this is the first year that we take on some debt service for our capital project as we come to a close on that. But on the revenue side of that, when we get to that side, and we've talked about this- when we get to that side of, and we've talked about this, you'll see that gets offset by building aid and some debt service, use of our debt service reserve. The proposed tax levy is an increase of fifty-nine thousand five eighty-six to five-point-four million seven-six-five-twenty-seven, which is a one-point-one percent increase. Again, a side-by-side look at our expenditures and, and revenues at the twenty-three million five eighty-nine, six oh six. Looking a little closer at the proposed expenditures comparing to prior year. Again, bottom line, the two-point-two million dollar increase. You'll see the, the wear in there. You'll see the significant increases, which is again in the debt service. Also, we are getting back on our bus purchase, large bus purchase replacement plan. So that is a large increase as well that's driving that number. On the revenue side of that, state aid had an increase of one-point-five million from the prior year. Again, that's a, a significant portion of that is the building aid that's coming on for the first year of the finalization of the capital project. We do have an increase in the pilot for the first year of the plug pilot, plug power pilot. I don't know if there's any questions on that, on this, but again, you'll see that big increase in state aid. That's really what's driving, driving that.
That use of reserves as the debt service reserve.
Yep, that is the debt service reserve. That'll, has been an accumulation over the years of premiums on bonds that can only be used towards pay, pay down the debt service. So this is a year we'll go out to ban. We're going to go out to bond at the end of the year. This is a good time to pay down and not finance as much. So this is a good use of this reserve. Tax levy, I've, I've, obviously you've seen this, the, the chart showing on the blue line is the tax cap amount and the yellow line is the tax levy that we actually went out with. This year, our tax cap is at one-point-nine-seven percent. We're proposing a tax levy increase of one-point-one percent. And on the left, I have a history, what we've done over the years. That's the numbers that kind of go along with that chart. But our average levy increase since twelve, thirteen school year, which is when the tax cap legislation was implemented, has been at point nine-seven. So we're, we're pretty close to that same average that we've been, what we've been averaging. Projected tax rates, this is based on the levy being defined at point four seven-six-five-twenty-seven with the one-point-one percent, which is the one-point-one percent increase. This shows what the tax rate was in twenty-one, twenty-two, what it will be in twenty-two, twenty-three, what the rate change is, and what the estimated annual bill will be on a hundred thousand dollar house, what that total annual increase is and what that represents on a monthly basis. Thought that would, might be important to show. I know about, anybody else I budget on a monthly basis, what goes into my, my savings account to pay my taxes bill at the end of the year. So what that impact would be.
So a dollar seventy-nine a month is what this is the impact.
For a hundred thousand, is that us?
Yeah.
Okay. District reserves, and this is another look at this. I, I hand, this is basically the same handout I gave you in the budget workshop that shows where we're at on those. You know, you see a little slight decrease from twenty to twenty-one school years. That was when we used the debt, excuse me, the capital reserve towards the capital project. But it was mitigated a little bit in the next year when we were able to fund the new capital reserve. So. This is very small and I don't expect you to be able to see this. This is the property tax report card. It is in board docs. This is what you are approving tonight. Very, very small. I commend you if you don't make this on. So you're welcome to look at board docs and zoom in on it. And again, that's one of the two motions that you're obviously in, in the agenda tonight for you to approve is the total appropriations and that property tax report card. The property tax report card has to be submitted twenty-four hours after approval by the board. So I'll have this submitted by tomorrow if it's approved tonight. But the latest it can be submitted is April twen-, April twenty-fifth. Our next meeting will, and presentation on the budget will be at the, you know, budget hearing on May ninth. That is a date change from May tenth at six P M. And it's a Monday. Did I put Tuesday?
See, I did one.
Yeah. We'll fix that before we put it up on our, our website.
I want to thank the board for their flexibility and just pushing that twenty-four hours ahead of time to that Monday. Thank you.
And then just some reminders of the date of our bud-, budget vote is Tuesday, May seventeenth, from eleven to eight in the community room. It's in person. You'll, we're presenting to the voters on proposition one is the budget appropriations. Also proposition number two is approving a student ex officio board member. And we have two open board seats up for election this year. We have two incumbents that turned in applications, Matt Lamb and Justin Stabell. Does anybody have any questions? Okay. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah, thanks again, Christine.
Really. You spent your spring break really putting a lot together for us. Thank you.
Oh, it's not, and it's not over. It's like six months of the year. It's like giving birth to a child.
Yeah. Well, it's appreciated. Thank you.
Seen enough, right?
Right. It's all over. Yep.
Okay, Jen, give me a little more baby touch.
Yeah.
Something different.
What'd you do for a second break, Jen?
Yeah.
I just laughed.
Yeah. I don't, I don't have much.
Did you give birth to baby numbers?
What's that?
Did you give birth to baby numbers?
Yeah. I don't have much. I did come back to meeting a gentleman out here at about six forty-five this morning because I was wanting to get back into the groove of things and, you know, check my emails and, and get moving. And, you know, he basically said I needed access to the, to the district office. And I said, what for? And he said, oh, you're the superintendent. We're taking out your windows. And by eight o'clock, it was actually snowing in my office. The windows came down. They had yet boarded up, you know, the holes. And as I'm sitting there in kind of my convertible office, it started to rain snow. So that was a nice welcome back here in April to have it snowing in my office. So I took a picture of it, sent it to all the other superintendents. I said, I bet you it's not snowing in your office today. So they got a good kick out of it. The weather is awful for our spring athletes and coaches. They're just hanging on. Hopefully it'll turn soon. I know this weekend looks much nicer, but they're talking about another cooldown with some rain next week. So it's going to be one of those seasons where you're going to end up playing twenty-four games in twelve days. I can see it coming. We're, we're just going to be squeezing games in, you know, two on Saturday and four on Sunday. So bear with us. Our buildings and grounds guys, they were working out last week. We've had conversations with them. They are raring and ready to go. You will see that you'll be approving an additional groundskeeper tonight. And they, you know, we're just, like I said, the weather today, tomorrow looks nice, although cold. And then Thursday, Friday looks like more rain. So it's, it's just not nice. You know, I've had conversations with Jeff where I think it would really be feasible for them to switch the spring and fall, fall sports. Because what are the kids doing over the summer anyway? They're playing, they're playing baseball. They're playing softball. And when the ground is thawed and it does rain, the ground soaks it up. And right now, you, you could have, you could play football, you know, maybe soccer, you know, soccer. But, you know, there is, there's been some discussion and push about switching the fall and, and spring athlete or the spring sports. And I tell you, I'm, I'm, I'm all for it. Jeff and I would vote yes on that if that ever came to, to a true vote. I just want to welcome back everybody from break and that our facilities committee will meet again this Thursday night at six P M. To continue, you know, the great work that they're doing at planning our, our future. You know, it's the OA twenty-thirty. And, you know, we're going to dive really deep Thursday into looking at, you know, the projects and things that need to be addressed from our former B C S and where the facilities committee wants to take this district over the next two, three, five, seven years. So.
We're going to check out the elementary too, right?
Yes, yes. We'll leave that to the end if we want to go down there. Other than that, I don't know if anybody has anything else there?
Yep. On the Friday, it's the twenty-ninth, we're going to do a wellness day in the elementary school. We're in the middle of our state testing. Coming back off COVID, our E L A testing, it was hard. The stamina of our kids was brutal. Our teachers just definitely need the day too. So after math, we're all gonna kind of play and have fun. And the kids are going to be surprised. They don't really know much about it. So our teachers are currently planning that. And then budget vote, again, we're having our parent picnic. So I know Mary's been working with Christine on the prices for the lunches and all that will be in my newsletter for May.
My good news seems kind of strange. I've been doing a lot of paperwork lately for COSER five-two-six, which is a partnership with BOSEs. COSER stands for combined services. And this COSER is school improvement. And since I have been here, well, I was here six months in COVID, so we have not been able to utilize this service as much as I'd like to. And what we're able to do with some of these services is that we do professional development and we partner with a BOSEs. They call it initiating events. We're like partnering together. We can get reimbursed for our substitute costs. We can get reimbursed in the summer for sending our teachers to professional development. We can get reimbursed for our mentors, our mentor stipends. It goes on and on and on. And there's not been much for me to do the last couple of years. And with Carla being new, she helps on the backend. We have some paperwork that's due at the end of May that she helps with. So we sat down today and I realized how much we've actually started doing again. Like our teachers are going to P Ds and we've got our teams going and this, the mentor program is going up and running. And I, I almost gave goosebumps thinking about it. It is a lot more paperwork, but it's a sign that we're really getting back to home. So that was exciting for me to really see it on paper that, yep, we're coming out of this thing.
Just like going back to normal, I covered for Lynn, actually on Friday at her building right before break. So it was really cool to see the kids just having fun, the teachers having fun, getting to know the students and the teachers and interacting at that level with them, which, you know, starting in October, it was hit the ground running. But to have that fun interaction, they were watching Encanto in the cafeteria, Mr. J wore a bunny suit. They were like, yeah, we do. So it was really cool to interact on that level with them instead of observations and evaluations and meetings and things like that. So that was an awesome opportunity. So, thank you, Lynn.
For trusting you.
I can't tell Mr. J any bunnies. I'll continue to continue on the grades and our student support this year. I presented back in October. I said I'd keep you abreast as to what's going on. So through the market period, just ended, our report cards went out, and the trend that we started is continuing. I think we have eighty-six percent reduction in failed courses in the first market period. That improved in the second market period at ninety-two percent reduced course, failed courses. And in the third market period, we're at ninety-three percent. So just tremendous job by all our teachers who are utilizing the office hours, the tutoring. Our kids are starting to get the message. So the trend is continuing. I'm super pleased about it.
I'll talk about the E-rate content, uh, E-rate E C F, as it's called, funding for Chromebooks. Great news. We just found out in the past two weeks that there will be a third round that we weren't even planning on applying for. We applied for round one, which got us four hundred dollars of free money, if you will, to buy a Chromebook for a child. Normally a Chromebook's around four hundred dollars. So instead of buying the student-grade Chromebook for the students, we're buying the teacher-grade Chromebook, the more premium level, like the one that's sitting right here. Larger screens, better processors, more RAM. So all the students will have the teacher-grade computer, which means we didn't plan on having such a premium Chromebook for kids, but now we can do that thanks to this funding. That was with round one, which we did get approved for, which was four hundred and forty units. When round three came out, I thought, let's apply for it. So we're pending right now our application. We've got our fingers crossed hoping they approve that. If they do, that is four hundred and twenty Chromebooks that will be eligible for to receive four hundred dollars each. So it's almost like we're replacing for all eight-hundred some students and all hundred and twenty or so staff within a two-year period, which normally that would take about four or five years to do. So we're shortening the amount of time where we're getting new Chromebooks, which means better processors, more horsepower, just basically less waiting when you're using a device, which is a really phenomenal thing. So we got our fingers crossed that our application gets approved. Basically, you can only apply for the maximum number of students and teachers you have. So I looked at our entire K through twelve number, used that as an application quantity. And I looked at the number of staff that interface with students, so it doesn't count clerical people. And I used that number too. And I basically said, all those people right now are using devices that are not as good as they could be because they haven't been bought in the past year, two or three. So if this works out, we will have really premium level Chromebooks all across the board, K through twelve, staff included.
I got some good news from Gentry County, not until half right before break. They've done a great job of recruiting new talent and as interns out of local colleges, they've signed M I to work immediately following graduation. And we're looking at staffing our satellite office starting in September again, for the day and a half of a year, twenty-four, or day and a half of a week, twenty-four slots for mental health services through Gentry County. It's a huge, be a huge boost to completely round out our student support facility. Looking forward to that.
Connie, what's, what areas of professional development are you kind of zooming in on here?
Well, with COSER five-two-six, it's basically anything that's offered at BOSEs. The mentors, that's through there. There's a lot of science of reading. There's social studies cohorts, math cohorts, E L A cohorts. There's, yep, the science. We've actually been partnering with Monroe two to get some science P D for our teachers. In particular, at the high school levels, they're trying to develop some curriculum. The elementary level, it's more, it's curriculum-based, but it's more on the new BOSEs for science kits that they have. And then there's a lot of general P D, like a teacher may want to like work on an instructional strategy. So I don't know if you guys use Frontline, but Frontline is a professional management. So teachers can go into Frontline and they can look at the whole catalog for G V BOSEs to see what's offered. They can look at the whole catalog for Monroe two BOSEs to see what's offered. And so they really have the option of choosing anything they want. And then depending on the building, it would go to Matt or Lynn to look and say, is this an appropriate professional offering for them to be going to?
Because I guess that's what I'm wondering is, is, is so if a teacher comes to you and says, hey, this is what's offered on Frontline, then?
Yep, it goes to the building principals.
I get an email saying that I have a request. Should we look through, make sure that it fits the budget and everything kind of checks off the list? Or Connie has Frontline set up where it goes off the board goals and then our building goals. So everything is goal-oriented. There's been a big push for the S E L and making sure we're, we're talking about the social emotional learning. So I think we'll see that trend for next year. We also are able to use the COSER five-two-six for sub reimbursement. So if our teachers in my building take a half-day and they're talking about their assessment blueprints and kind of revamping some of those units of studies, those subs are also covered.
Because that's really been bad, right, for the list?
Yeah. So the other neat thing too, it's not just BOSEs offerings. So sometimes there's something, I mean, these teachers, they're involved in a professional organization. So it might not be something that comes through BOSEs. So if they want to do professional learning that's not in a catalog, there's a form that they go through and submit and the same process happens. It goes to the principals and then they approve it from there.
Cool. Thanks.
Yep. It's all right.
Okay. New business. Item eight-point-one, C S E placements and amendments. Be it resolved that the attached listing of C S E placements amendments be approved? Can I get a motion?
So.
Second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Okay. Eight-point-two, G V BOSEs budget vote. Be it resolved that the twenty-twenty-two, twenty-twenty-three BOSEs administrative budget be approved in the amount of three million twenty-seven thousand, three hundred sixty-six thousand dollars. Can I get a motion?
Salute.
Second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
Good call. Yes. Good call, by the way. Yeah.
You were in the minutes of the other agenda.
You're right. All right. So you might have to set me straight on this next one, Dan. Okay. So item eight-point-three, Gentry Valley BOSEs board member vote. So these are incumbents that are, they're four incumbent, incumbent, incumbents, sorry, that are seeking reelection. And there's four open seats. So I'm pretty sure that we would.
Right. They're, they're incumbents. They're just looking for your approval.
That's it, right?
Yep.
Okay. So I'm not going to butcher their names here. I don't, unless you'd really like me to.
I'm good, buddy. I'm good.
Are you okay?
Yeah.
As well as I? Yeah, you guys can read them as well as I can.
Yeah. Can read as good as you can say it.
All right, be it resolved that the nominees of the Board of Cooperative Educational Services be elected as follows. And it looks like I am going to read these. Norbert Quest, Roger Kostaki, Robert DeBruckeier, Christie Crandall Bean. Can I get a motion?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? And it noted that Dan stays from this vote as well. Okay. Item 8.4, 2022, 2023 Board of Education Meeting Dates. Be it resolved that the attached Board of Education Meeting Dates be approved for the 2022, 2023 school year, subject to change at discretion of the Board? Can I get a motion?
So moved.
Second?
Yeah, it's not, it's second.
He's got the finger in the pot, he's like playing Jeopardy.
I'll second, yes.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passed. Okay. 8.6, Property Tax Report Card. Be it resolved that the Oakfield Alabama Central Schools.
Skip 8.5.
Can't skip that one.
No, yeah, we need that one.
Moving on, yeah, we probably need this one. 8.5, 2022, 2023 District School Budget. Recommended that the Oakfield Alabama Central School District Board of Education found a recommendation of Jan C. Fiskus Superintendent of Schools does hereby approve the 2022, 2023 budget in the amount of $23,589,606 to be presented to the residents of the Oakfield Alabama Central School District on May 17th, 2022 for vote. Can I get a motion? Second?
Second.
Discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Now, 8.6, Property Tax Report Card. Be it resolved that the Oakfield Alabama Central School District Board of Education approve the 2022, 2023 real property tax report card as presented. Your motion?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Okay. 8.7, Budget Vote Volunteers. Be it resolved that the following voters be approved to assist at the annual budget votes. Linda Richter, Tim Richter, Ann Angle, Ed Angle, Sharon Cole, Peggy Lamb, Linda Bueller, William Bueller, and Barbara.
Barber.
Barber. Oh, sorry. Barber, thank you, William Barber and Barbara Barber. I think that's it. Can I get a motion? Thank you.
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Third, any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Thanks. Okay, Jen, there's a lot of reading to do here and I think we're probably going to be a better.
So this is, this is a resolution for the board to approve an ex officio board member that would allow the board in the, in the district to have a student, student on, on the Board of Education. And what I mean by that is that they would be part of discussions, they would have a placeholder in the board agenda to present student activities. They would be part of the general public conversations. They are not privy to executive session, they're not privy to confidential information. They are not allowed to vote. Basically, all of that is in there per education law, but it would allow at least a student voice, a student representative. Usually this person is a junior or senior. We would, as a district, if approved, would come up with an application process to find a suitable candidate, probably one that might be going into, you know, business, marketing, media, you know, anything. You know, I'd probably work with student government, you know, high school student council and find someone interested. And the district would appoint somebody to start in July, you know, in the new year. But again, there's a lot of reading here, but that's, that's the ins and outs of it. I think it's a very good look for our board and our district. And as small as it is, I think it would be great to have just a student representative on our board to be part of, you know, some of the discussions that we have. So.
I'll make a motion to adopt the proposition to present to the voters to add the ex officio non-voting member.
I will second that.
Any discussion? No, I think it's a, I think it's a neat opportunity. I'm looking forward to it. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Proposition passes here. The voter approval. You're welcome, thank you. 8.9, A Donation. And be it resolved that the following donation be approved? It's, I believe it's a clarinet from Mrs. Santi, so can I get a motion for that?
Make a motion.
Second?
Second.
Discussion?
Thank you.
Yeah, thanks very much.
Thank you.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Okay. 8.10, Incident Response Plan. Be it resolved, or be it approved that the attached district incident response plan be approved? Can I get a motion?
So moved.
Second? Any discussion? Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Okay. Other than from the Green family, have we got any other communications? No. Okay, so we have received communications by email from the Green family in regards to visitation at the elementary school. And we've responded accordingly based on some legal guidance. Move on to discussion round table. I don't think we have anything tonight for that. And then the personnel. Be it resolved that items 11.2 through 11.8 be approved by consent agenda?
I apologize to the board for 11.8, that was the last minute, like 30 minutes before the board meeting. Just due to time and obviously vacation next week. We're asking for the approval of two modified track coaches, that being Courtney Kelly and Matthew Johnson as co-modified track coaches. They will split the stipend at step one.
Yeah, thanks for stepping up there for those two.
Mr. Johnson is currently.
He is the new special ed teacher up at the middle high school.
Okay.
That we hired this year.
This year, right, yeah. Trying to think if there's anything else. Can I, can I get a motion?
So moved.
Yep, second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Yep, just trying to plan it here. Okay, 11.9, we have a leave of absence here. Be it resolved that the board acknowledges and approves a military leave of absence of William Snyder due to the deployment orders, or due to deployment orders. Can I get a motion?
So moved.
Second, any discussion?
Thank you for your service.
Thank you, yes.
Good luck.
Yeah, thank, yeah, thank you. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Okay. Be it resolved that the Board of Education will enter executive session at 7:19 regarding the employment of a particular employee and district litigation? Can I get a motion?
So moved.
Second? Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes.